I now call back to order the Pasco County Board of Commission meeting of August 8, 2023. Please silence all electronic device and mutual microphones. We'll proceed with public hearings ordinances. Item number P-60, a continuance. Madam Clerk?
Item P-60 was published in Tampa Bay Times on June 7, 2023.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Item P-60 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan text amendment to goal flu six. I can read the whole title, but it's essentially an ordinance for the villages of Pasadena Hills.
You need to read the whole title there.
Providing for a comprehensive plan text amendment to goal flu six, village mixed use tables to increase land area, village centers and villages B and C, add policy flu six dot five dot fifteen, conditions to transfer unused densities to village cores, and revise tables PH two and PH three to allow increase of up to twenty percent residential entitlements in exchange for commercial or off square footage in the J Ben Harold villages of Pasadena Hills, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer survivability and effective date, and this is a continuance to the October 10, 2023.
Thank you. May I have a motion to continue P-60?
So move. Set.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No. You're good.
All right, approved unanimously. P-61.
Item P-61 was published in Tampa Bay Times on July 19, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-61 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet zero twelve, changing from aisle industrial light in rez three residential three dwelling units per gross acre to rez six residential six dwelling units per gross acre on approximately sixty eight point two five acres of real property located on the north side of state road fifty two west of Kent Grove Drive, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer survivability and an effective date, and this is coming to you with for a recommendation for approval. We have a presentation if the board desires.
I'd say let's have a presentation.
Presentation? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ed Zodi, and I'm a planner with Long Range. The matter before you. The proposal is a flu change. There is a MPUD that's going to be heard later today with respect to the site location. This is the subject site that's across from Angeline. As you can see, it's on state road fifty two. Site location, we just addressed. The existing future land uses, we said, and the potential of the proposed future land uses for the site. The zoning. Now, there is a portion of this property that's going to retain, remain the C three zoning that's next to the Kent Grove Drive. That was as an accommodation to the land. These are the policies that show this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we ask that you find the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopt by roll call vote. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Mr. Wade.
The product on this fee simple town?
Yes. Okay. You have an applicant?
I'd rather answer that for the applicant. Barbara Willhite, sixty three, twenty seven, Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, three four six five two for the applicant, yes. Platted townhomes, a maximum under two hundred and four. That's under the MPUD, which is item P-65.
Thank you, Chair.
I have a question, but I think it might be for sixty five. That's about connectivity.
That would be for the rezoning and not for the town plan.
All right. Is it a public hearing? Anyone here from the public to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anyone signed up in person, and there's no one on WebEx.
Okay.
This approval?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call.
Call the rule.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Item P-62, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item P-62 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 21, 2023.
Item P-62 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash fifteen and sheet twenty two from rez six residential six dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial on approximately eight point three one acres of real property located north of state road fifty four, approximately four hundred feet from the Curly Road and state road fifty four intersection, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer survivability and effective date. This comes with the recommendation of approval, and we have a presentation available at desire.
I don't need a presentation. Do we need a presentation?
I do have some questions about this.
Okay. Let's hear a presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ebro Stevens, planning and development. Before you today is PDD two three zero three seven four, a small scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAS twenty three zero seven, Curly Road and SR fifty four. The property is located in the South Market area and the urban concentration area. The proposal is a small scale comprehensive plan amendment to amend future land use map two dash fifteen and sheet twenty two from rez six residential six dwelling units to comm commercial to allow for commercial uses on approximately eight point three one acres. Specifically, the site is located north of state road fifty two, approximately four hundred feet from the Curly Road and state road fifty two intersection. There are pending rezonings at a future date. This is the aerial.
And this is state road fifty four, right? State road fifty four?
Yes, sir. It's context map showing specifically, as you can see, we've got MPUDs to the north and northwest, Chapel Pines, as well as Pine Ridge and Fifty Four Fork. We also have Chapel Crossing to the east and Saddle Brook Resorts to the south. Currently accessed, we have two on state road fifty four, as well as two on Curly Road. The existing future land use is rez six, as I mentioned before. We also have rez six the northeast and west, and to the south, we have comm and rez six. The proposed future land use of commercial. Zoning is AR agricultural residential. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies: policy flu one six two, location of commercial development; policy flu one six three transitional land uses; and policy flu eight one two, the South Market area establishments. With that, staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopt by roll call votes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to staff?
I do.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have a deed restriction on this property for live local?
I would ask you to come speak to that.
Good afternoon, Kevin Rialy with Sterns Bureau Miller Law Firm, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa. So the zoning applications for this property are coming separately. When we came in, we were coming in with just one of the parcels for this application. Staff asked us, they said this would work better as a node, and asked us to get the neighbors to join in, and we did that. And so there's not going to, there's not one zoning application, it'll be separate zoning applications. So those deed restrictions will come at the time of zoning, and I have confirmed with all of the owners and all have agreed to deed restrict the local act at the time of zoning.
Thank you. Commissioner Starkey?
I think my question, I think I listened to this on the planning commission, and my questions will be the next time they come in, the site plan.
Your questions are on?
Yeah, I'm zoned, yeah. Hold my mic.
All right. Any questions to staff? All right. And the applicant?
Does the, do you, this is your time to present if you've got a presentation.
We have a presentation. It would be largely duplicative, so I don't think I need to go through the slides, but we have our whole development team here, engineer and planner, if there are any questions the commission has.
Why don't we take a public comment, then we'll come back to you if you need me.
Say it, Tom.
Okay. All right, time for public comment. Anyone here from the public to speak? I think we have one signed up.
We do. Ms. Jennifer Azaro. And Mr. Chair, there's no one signed up on WebEx for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. So I was here also, I attended the planning meeting also, and during that presentation, like, there was only one, because I live behind that area. I live right on Curly Road. So the maps that I see during the presentations are very different than the ones that were submitted to the FDOT. They're going to have a meeting on the fourteenth to decide on, like, I guess, the exit, entrance and exit to the complex. So theirs has, like, the stormwater drain or the stormwater area being more behind our neighborhood, and the convenience store, they didn't do a presentation, so it says a convenience store and it says a grocery store. So we have no idea what that could be. We do know there is a storage facility. That's fine. My concern, though, is that Curly Road, it cannot, that type of traffic, because I, literally, when I walk out of my backyard, it's there. It cannot handle that type of in and out. I can barely get out of my neighborhood in the morning, or even get home in the afternoon. So if you have an exit that's going out straight into our neighborhood, there's, there's no way that's going to happen. Plus, when you're coming off of fifty four, those cars are going around a curve, so that's a danger in itself. The other issue I have is Kirkland Ranch has not even been opened yet, and the Wells Road, where the school buses have two options pretty much to get there. They have Curly Road, and they have Van Dyne, and they are backed up. So a lot of our school buses, I know we have school bus shortages, which I had mentioned in the planning commission, but a lot of them are backed up because of traffic, and they can't get to the schools. So putting something else on that corner with no kind of roadwork in sight, it just does not seem to make sense to me. If there was a plan in there, if there was a plan in there to expand that road at that section, then that would make sense to me. The other concern I have is also that if there is, example, a convenience store, the lighting intrusion that would happen in our neighborhood would probably be an intrusion on just my living, right? So I don't see a whole lot of things in the map for buffer. I don't see a whole lot of trees or anything. It kind of looks like it's going straight up to the road, and that's it. So that's, that's pretty much all I have. The DOT, the map they have is from Solid Rock Property Group. So I, those aren't in any of the slides that I've seen. And like I said, the planning commission, the representatives for those other properties for the convenience store and the grocery store did not come and attend that meeting. So I don't know what's going to be there.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Azaro, five eight four eight, Lakefront Drive, Wesley Chapel Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Chair. That's for county attorney. So I do have concerns of what the usage on this property can be, particularly where it's located. So is it appropriate to have those conversations now, or do we wait until the second round when it comes back?
So if your concerns are commercial in general at this location, now is, now is the appropriate time to have them. If your concern is potential commercial uses, then it would be more appropriate to have those, those discussions at the rezoning stage for this project. Because right now, you're changing the future land use from residential to commercial. If that's the issue for you, now's, now's the time.
My, my issues are with the usage. Not changing to commercial. I'm all for upgrading sites, but it's the type of commercial that we're potentially going to see here.
Commissioner Starkey?
You know, I had some thoughts, too, on more layout and, and access and movement, but that wouldn't be here. So one of the things I'm going to be asking about is commercial developments having a property owner, property owners association. And but this parcel, I think it's different. It's not one big developer, it's multiple. So, but, so I'm seeing problems where when we go to, when we have develop, commercial developments that aren't taking care of things, and there's no, no point person because everyone, they don't have a property owners association that's maintaining the common spaces, so.
If they're deemed a common plan of development, your land development code does not require them to have a property owners association, which is what you're running into.
So, yeah, so, so we, if you think of the Lowe's on Little Road, Little and Ridge, behind the Kentucky Fried Chicken and Wendy's, it's a disaster, it's garbage, weeds, overgrown, and, and so there's no one to point to or to figure out who's responsible for maintaining that. So we have to, I want to take care of that problem.
Be a different event.
Huh?
It'll be a different event, not, not here.
Yeah, not here.
Okay. I mean, is it land use change? I mean, for years, we looked at this as going commercial many years ago, so I'm surprised it hasn't been done already, but it does make sense. The questions from the resident, I think it's all going to be handled in zoning, so I think all those things, hopefully applicants listening, that we can pay attention to that as it comes forward.
I'd call for Jim to comment.
Okay. Any other further public comment? And there's no one on WebEx?
No one on WebEx.
We'll close for public comment. Staff, do you want to talk first, or do you want the applicant to talk?
Well, we did that.
No. This is rebuttal.
This is rebuttal.
Oh, rebuttal.
Any comments, Terry?
I don't believe that there's any additional information that we can provide given the discussion.
All right. And the applicant?
I'm Kevin Rialy for the record, and based on Commissioner Starkey and Chair Moreno's comments, I was sitting back down because I would agree, these are issues that will have to deal with at zoning. And, you know, the, the one thing I'll put on the record is that the site plans that Ms. Azaro is referring to are pre-op and, pre-op submissions and pre-op with FDOT, and so, you know, there's no application even in for zoning yet, and so we'll have to tackle those at a later day. Thank you.
So let me ask a question. Did you do a town hall meeting with the residents?
We have not done a meeting yet. We will do the meeting when we come in for zoning to talk about site design and ways to protect the neighborhood, yes.
All right. Terry, aren't we supposed to do a town hall meeting for a land use change?
The requirements are in the land development code for the neighborhood meetings, and for comprehensive plan amendments, it's not always required that a neighborhood meeting be set.
So was it required in this one?
We have been working, active in asking applicants to go out and do neighborhood meetings for comprehensive plan amendments, particularly when we know that the application, that there's a community concern around the application.
Okay, well, there's definitely concern here to the applicant. If you would, I'll just ask you, you don't have to do it, but I would ask you to do a town hall meeting, make sure the residents get invited to show them what's going on.
Right, a lot of credit.
That's the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to the board.
Move, approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the rule?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Motion passes four oh. Item P-63?
Item P-63 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 7, 2023, and June 14, 2023.
All ready?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elizabeth Lehrer, Senior Assistant County Attorney, Pasco County Attorney's Office. Today is the second public hearing, the adoption hearing, on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 600, overlay in special districts, creating Section 605, airport overlay districts, Appendix A definitions and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability conclusion into the land development code, and an effective date. This is our public hearing, like I said, and today I'd ask that you hold the public hearing, accept public comment if any, and also thank Denise Hernandez for her extensive work on this matter with me. Any questions for me?
I'll say, Elizabeth, you and Denise have done a phenomenal job going through this. Great to see it finally gets to this step.
Yeah, very happy. Thank you.
Any other comments for Elizabeth? Okay, does anyone here from the public like to speak to item P-63?
I have no one signed up for item P-63, and no one on WebEx.
I see a couple of approaches.
Barbara Willhite, sixty three, twenty seven, Grand Boulevard, for nobody but myself. It's been a journey, and staff has worked really, really, really hard on this, and they collaborated, and they really should be commended for the work effort. This is not an easy topic. I've been learning along the way, and they've taught me a lot, and I think I've taught them some, too, but I just wanted to go on the record and say that, really, really worked hard on it and appreciate your collaboration.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Spencer Brass. I'm the chairman of the Airport Zoning Commission, 11500 Pilot Country Drive, Spring Hill. We're finally here. We did it. Those who remember, we've done it, and thank you to Denise and Elizabeth. This was a, this was a very, very big task, and they worked tirelessly and worked with all the stakeholders, and thanks to Barbara for all of your help and input, so we'd like you to pass this. We're finally here. Thank you very much.
Spencer, thanks for serving as chairman as well, to go through this thing. You were going to be a key, integral part of this whole thing, so thanks for taking part.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here from the public to speak to this item? Anyone on WebEx?
No one on WebEx.
We'll close the public hearing.
Move, approve.
Second.
Then a roll call, please.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Motion passes four oh. Now we proceed with the public hearings. County attorneys, please review the procedures for the, procedures for rezoning.
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If the staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's land development code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear them in?
Yes, Mr. County Attorney. If you are here to speak on the rest of any of the remaining items, please stand. Raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you. Today, we have five public hearing items on the consent agenda, and one item is continuance. We'll start with P-71.
P-71 is yours, Bob.
Item P-71 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on July 26, 2023.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Paul Corey, Pasco County Budget Director. The item you have before you is a TEPA application for the Moffett Cancer Research Institute. As you're aware, TEPA is a federal law that allows certain organizations to borrow money at tax exempt rates with two requirements that are relevant here today. The first is that it must be approved by the county commission, and that approval contains a point that this activity is in public interest. And the second is that there'd be a public hearing to receive feedback from the public. As I did mention, this will allow Moffett to borrow at tax exempt rates, thereby saving Moffett millions of dollars in interest dollars. So how will this money be used? Moffett plans on using this to build a indoor care facility in the Spiros campus here in Pasco County. For those at home, I just wanted to reiterate, the county is not responsible for paying debt service. There's no cost to the county resulting from the approval of this application, and Moffett is not borrowing the money from Pasco County. We have two representatives from Moffett with us here today, Joanna Weiss and Jonathan Ruth. We have Brooke Gonzalez and Duane Draper from Bryant Miller Olive, who is the county's bond counsel. Of course, Mr. Stein, Snyder's been actively involved in this case if you have any questions. And before we get to questions, I'd like to ask that the county commission open this up for public hearing.
For purposes of the record, Bryant Miller and Olive is actually bond counsel to Moffett for this transaction. They are normally your bond counsel, but we've given them a conflict waiver since we're all sort of on the same side.
Thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak to this item? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, there's a, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have two individuals signed up, David Talby and Jim Hammond.
Um, we get the rebuttal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I got the wrong one. We do not have anyone signed up for this one or on WebEx. Sorry about that.
So we'll close the public hearing. We're closing.
Is there anywhere in the audience? Anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this TEPA hearing? Seeing none, close it.
No one on WebEx, we'll close the public comment. May I have a motion to approve item P-71?
Move, approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Now proceed to item 64, continuance.
Item P-64 was published in Tampa Bay Times on June 7, 2023.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. P-64 is PDD 237590. It's a zoning amendment, Mitchell Ranch East, mixed use MPUD, master plan unit development. This is a request to continue the item to the August 22, 2023, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item P-65, Madam Clerk?
Item P-65 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 21, 2023.
P-65 is PDD 237591, zoning amendment in the name of State Route 52 Groves MPUD, master plan unit development. State Route 52 Groves Inc., it's a rezoning request from R3 medium density residential, C2 general commercial, C3 commercial light manufacturing, and I1 light industrial zoning districts to an MPUD master plan unit development to allow for a maximum of two hundred and four single family attached dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately sixty eight point four nine acres. Comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission. To answer Commissioner Starkey's question from earlier on when the comp plan was heard, the applicant is requesting some, requests not to interconnect on the entire western portion because there's category one wetlands, and most of the eastern portion also has wetlands. Whatever does not have a wetland coverage is consistent, is all platted lots with residential homes that are already existing on the property. They do, they are proposing interconnects to the north.
And that's the one I asked?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just ask a quick question on it, to Commissioner Waitman's question, applying to the local act.
So this is the, we're not, this one is actually going MPUD for residential, two hundred and four units. So it's not going commercial.
Okay.
You're doing it to yourself.
The other way, okay.
Somebody started.
All right, so leave it on consent? Is there anyone in the, in the audience to oppose this item?
I have no one signed up in person or on WebEx.
Okay, I'll leave it on consent. P-66?
Item P-66 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 24, 2023. Item P-66 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 24, 2023.
P-66 is PDD 237684, zoning amendment in the name of Sarah Gurley Trust, Max Allen and Sarah C. Gurley, co-trustees, for a change in zoning from an AR Agricultural Residential District to a C2 General Commercial District. Comes here with a recommendation of approval. The applicant, applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction that reserves the uses for commercial uses on the property. And comes with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Anyone here to speak in opposition to P-66? Anyone on WebEx?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx.
Thank you. Item P-67?
Item P-67 was published in Tampa Bay Times on July 19, 2023.
P-67 is PDD 230391, it's Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 2107, Project Arthur Ecological Corner Boundary Modification, Future Land Use Change. It's for, this is for the transmittal of this item, so you're transmitting the item to the Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies. So you're transmitting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Future Land Use Map 2-15, Sheet 12 from PD Plan Development to CON, Conservation Lands, on approximately 1,517.89 acres of real property located south of State Route 52, north of State Route 54, east of the Sunway Parkway, and west of the CSX Real Corridor in Land O' Lakes and a map amendment to the Future Land Use Map 2-9, amending subarea map 2-943, Project Arthur, and to, and a map amendment to the Conservation Map 3-4, amending the north Pasco to Crossbar Ecological Corridor and the north Pasco to Cotterton Ecological Corridor, providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date. The local planning agency found this item consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And again, today, we're just asking you to accept public comment and allow us to transmit it to Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies.
Is there anyone here to speak against this item, P-67?
I have...
I think the question is P-68.
I have no one signed up for this item and no one on WebEx.
Okay, leave it on consent?
Um, Commissioner, I need to...
Commissioner Starkey?
I need to pull P, the one before this, for a question.
P-65?
P-66.
So we're going to put P-67 on. You want to pull 65 for a question?
Or 66?
Which one? P-66?
P-66? No.
The Gurley Trust. It's the commercial, if, if, that's the one you handed me.
Sorry, I ripped it out. Yes, P-66.
So you want to just pull it off consent and we'll deal with it later?
Yeah.
Okay. Then pull 66. Item P-68?
One moment, let me get back. Item P-68 was published in Tampa Bay Times on July 19, 2023.
P-68 is also a transmittal to the Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies, it's PDD 230497, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 2207, Heinz, Cruz, and Douglas, KD 52, providing for transmittal of the proposed tax amendments to the future land use element Appendix A map, amendment to the future land use map 2-9, amending subarea map 2-922, Gateway Hub Subarea and Subarea map 2-922A, Gateway Hub Subcategories. There is a correction that was sent to the Clerk's office today that is as a result of some comments that were made by the LPA on 8/3/23, and those were submitted into record as well, and comes to you with a recommendation that you accept public comment and authorize transmittal to Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies. The local planning agency found it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to the board on August 3, 23.
Anyone here in opposition to speak to item P-68?
I have no one signed up in person and no one on WebEx.
Okay, so with the exception of P-66, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, P-66.
Um, okay, I was wondering on 67, but...
This may be an applicant representative's question, Liam.
Is the applicant here?
I believe the, Liam Devine, Planning and Development, I believe the applicant is online, Peter Pensor. I don't know if you would like a presentation from staff?
No, I just, I have a question on this property, on its association.
I guess the question, the question that you could answer is, is, is your team going to consider this a common plan of development or is it going to be a subdivision?
I will defer to the Development Review Manager, Brad Tippin, to answer that question.
Hi, Brad! Oh, that was priceless.
He reported that to the manager right away.
So, so he has the answer, he just wants me to say it. We don't have the answer to that question until it comes in at a time of site plan review, we look at, at the actual design itself and see the various forms, if there's certain common areas, connectivities, things like that, which way it needs to go. It's conceptual. We don't have anything, yeah, we don't have anything submitted formally.
I think you've heard the desire of at least one commissioner that property merchants association or property owners association should be required for commercial, but...
That, yes.
Right, that was my question.
Do we have a motion?
I will, sorry, before you make motion, there was a revised attachment, attachment, ooh, I don't know what the number is, but the resolution attachment to the item, it was uploaded with the wrong resolution. The correct resolution has been provided to the court's office.
Okay, that, that doesn't affect what I...
No.
Mr. Chair, Liam?
Hold on.
Sorry?
Commissioner Waitman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be clear, I think Denise said earlier, we finally did get our deed restriction on this, correct?
Yes, they, so our, this last time that came to the board, it was at our July 11th meeting, you actually asked if they would be willing to do a deed restriction to address the Live Local Act. They, they have revised their application, provided that Live Local Act deed restriction?
They have not.
They have.
It's in your packet.
Yep, so, and it is in your agenda packet, it is finding fact number two, so it does address Live Local.
Okay, just confirming, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I made that motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Go to item P-69.
Item P-69 was published by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
P-69 is PDD 230362, it's a resolution by the, or the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, amending the resolution approving the abandonment of the One Pasco Center Development of Regional Impact, there's a typo there, development order, Pasco Resolution Number 0023, to remove Condition 11 regarding maximum parking. So we ask that you approve the resolution amending the former One Pasco Center DRI abandonment.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. There's a public hearing, anyone in opposition to, or anyone want to comment on item P-69?
I have no one signed up in person and no one on WebEx for P-69.
Okay, close public comment to the board?
Move, approve.
Motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Item P-70?
Item P-70 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19, 2023, and July 26, 2023.
Item P-70 is PDD 23CU11, it's conditional use for 195-foot above ground level monopole wireless communication facility in an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District. The applicant is H. Cheval, Inc., BBVTS LLC, T-Mobile LLC. The property is located in the South Market area, urban, urban service area in south central Pasco County, on the north side of 20 Mile Level Road, approximately 1,550 feet east of Collier Parkway. The surrounding zoning is MPUD, as you can tell, to the north, this is part of the Plantation Palms Golf Course and the Plantation Palms MPUD. To the south is AR and AC. And east and west is the, east is the Plantation Palms Golf Course, west is Plantation Palms Golf Course. Future land use surrounding is RES6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre. This is the aerial and access visual, access to the overall site is through 20 Mile Level Road, which is a county maintained local road with approximately 40 feet of rideaway. Access to the wireless communication facility, license, the leased area is proposed to a, through a 20-foot wide access and utility easement. This basically shows what's surrounding the areas, you can tell the Plantation Palms Golf Course is to the north and the Plantation Palms MPUD. To the south is a Land O' Lakes Recreation Complex, and then there's some agricultural residential zoned parcels to the south as well. This is just showing the site plan, showing where the, the actual wireless communication facility and fence compound area will be based on the site, the location of the site. So the site, as I stated before, consists of the Plantation Palms Golf Course Maintenance Facility within the Plantation Palms MPUD. I've explained what the surrounding areas characterized by the Plantation Palms Golf Course and the Land O' Lakes Recreation Complex. Wireless communications facilities are either permitted uses or conditional uses in all zoning districts and all future land use classifications. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on January 25, 2023. There was notice made to the Pilot Country Airport in the Tampa North Aero Park because it's within 10 nautical miles of those airports, and there was no comments received. There was a letter of support that is included in your agenda packet from the Plantation Palms Homeowners Association. There was a letter of objection that was received from property owners located approximately 450 feet northwest of the proposed compound area, and the item was reviewed by Omnicom Consulting Group, which are, which is our RF consultant, and they recommended approval of the conditional use. When the item went to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission added a condition that basically stated that prior to submittal of the preliminary site plan, the owner's applicant shall submit to the county a survey. The survey results of the Plantation Palms residents plurality choice of the W, of the wireless communication facility design based on four designs that were presented at the May 4, 2023 Planning Commission. So those, at the Planning Commission, and I'm sure the applicant will have more information on those designs, what was shown was a monopole, a shrouded monopole, a bell tower, and a monopine. And basically that the owners and, or the owner's applicants would construct the wireless communication facility design, which the plurality of the residents chose. So this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions, staff? No? Okay. And to the applicant.
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Tania-John, 935 Main Street, Suite C4, Safety Harbor, Florida, 34695. As a point of order, prior to my presentation, we have PowerPoint. All right, that's up and running, so as you heard, I come before you today with staff and Planning Commission unanimous recommendations of approval for 195-foot tall communication tower. It's currently planned to be a monopine on the service parcel for the Plantation Palms Golf Course, and that's parcel 20-26-19, a block of 4-0s, dash 00300, dash 0041. Just keeping things brief, we meet the setbacks for the MPUD, the base of the tower will be enclosed by a PVC fence. The tower will be completely dark at night, you've heard all this stuff from your staff. During Planning Commission, we were asked to propose designs to the, to the membership and the HOA coordinated a vote indicating that they would like it to be a monopine, and we have provided, we have provided photo simulations to that effect. I have also provided, since the Planning Commission, a letter of intent from Verizon Wireless, and I'm going to proceed forwards now. So this is just the aerial that you've been seeing, and this was shown to the Planning Commission, the yellow arrow shows the proposed location of the monopine. The purple area is the Land O' Lakes Recreation Center. The orange wire, the orange line is high voltage power lines, to the south is a gray arrow showing the location of the existing flagpole, it's currently trying to serve the Plantation Palms area. Essentially, what's going on is with a flagpole style communication tower, it's like putting your Wi-Fi router in your attic. So essentially, you cook the equipment, is what happens, you cook the computers and radios that are attached to the, to the antennas. And they also need space in order to aim their, to aim their antennas to where the traffic is. The carriers fight the same concurrency battle that you face with your roads, except over the air, and that's why they're trying to set up a deployment in this area with modern antennas, so that way they can provide the bandwidth that they need in order to keep up with traffic. These are just closer views. In all maps and aerials I show you, up is north. The tower that is being replaced for T-Mobile is 1,150 feet to the south southwest, so that is within your 1,500-foot radius for the, for, under your tower code to research the sites. Before this hit my desk, T-Mobile looked into expanding that tower, it did not work out, and so then they came to us. The only two carriers that are on that tower are T-Mobile and Verizon. Verizon has a couple more years left, years left on their lease, but they have provided a letter of intent to come off the flagpole tower and onto our tower. At that time, the tower will be abandoned, your tower code takes over for removal. This is just the zoning from your GIS, this is the future land use map from your GIS, this is a picture of a monopole, which is not, we're a monopine now. But anyways, just to run through the photo simulations for the monopine, you can see it here in the middle, and the canopy extends low enough that is captured by the trees in the area, and you can see it just extends upwards like a normal pine wood. You can see another view, and this is actually close to where the neighbor objectors, Tom and Don LaFerry, were, they're two house, they're one house to the left, and the monopine was one of the ideas suggested by them and helped lead to vote, or discussed by them. This is at, my apologies, this is another view, and you can see that the vegetation is blocking the base. Let me get my exact location. This is Bermuda Court looking southwest, Banyan Hill, you can see just moving away a bit, the trees that are in between the houses and the tower, provide very effective buffering. And then finally, 20 mile level road. Just to run into the RF package, as I said, this is a replacement, you can see a map showing the different sectors from the surrounding towers, since they do deal with traffic. The tower that is in the middle, A2G 7422C is the existing flagpole tower, and particularly that yellow area to the north is burdened with traffic capacity, it's like a dysfunctional road essentially. You can see the next tower to the north is this red square with the letters A2G 0552B, and that is the next tower north, it's trying to reach into the Plantation Palms area, it's the second best server and it's picking up traffic from there, so increasing the capacity of the tower trying to serve Plantation Palms will also take traffic off of that and neighboring towers so they get more life out of them. This is starling, this is what we called starling data, and this shows the strength of connections in the area. And you can see to the north that we have a mixture of connections that if you have a clear line of sight, they're getting some okay connections, but you can also see connections that are poor. And that's the reds. This is sector charting, so this is like looking at capacity. The blue lines show the, so that show the congestion threshold, and you can see that the existing flagpole on, the existing flagpole is over its congestion levels. These are the 4G coverage plots, I also have 5G coverage plots, but on 4G, which is essentially your low traffic coverage these days, we will get a little more expansion to the east and the west, so it will help with a little bit of, it will help a little bit to the west. But when we go into 5G, which is the high traffic band, you can see a comparative plot showing that even if that flagpole were able to be upgraded, it could not reach north of Plantation Palms, you have a whole other subdivision up there. So the purple, the blue arrow is pointing to the existing flagpole, and it's theoretical because it assumes that we could even change it to a monopole. Or a monopole type setup. Underneath the monopine camouflaging is a monopole's arrangement. And then this shows the monopines location from the maintenance facility, and you can see that we can resolve a gap in service to the north of Plantation Palms in addition to the gap in Plantation Palms. You'll notice that these are not perfect circles, that's because these frequencies are not like your television frequencies where you could take and put a signal like out in, you know, you could take and put a signal in Plant City and reach out to the greater Tampa Bay area, that's, you know, WTSP, Channel 10 broadcasts across all Tampa Bay because they have a signal that grounds into Tampa Bay and is much more strong than this, this is all low power stuff, and so things as simple as houses and leaves can deflect most of the signals, and that's why you end up with this cragly looking layout. most of the signals, and that's why you end up with this cragly-looking layout. So we had objectors from Tom and Don LaFerry. However, we have had the pleasure of working with the HOA and interfacing with our neighbors after our community meeting and after the Planning Commission meeting, and a vote was held. That led to the monopine communication tower, monopine style, and unless something has come in this morning that I'm unaware of, I have no objectors. So with that, I am available for your questions. I have David Talby available for your questions and Bill Place, who is the owner of the golf course. I also have Jim Hammond, who I believe is going to want to make a statement from the public. And that concludes my direct presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions to the applicant? And I'd like to say, I think you did a great job. We had a communication, so I just want to review it with you. One of the problems I had was having two cell towers so close to each other.
Yes.
And what you did, after we had our conversation, you went out and worked with the cell tower company, and now, after this tower gets built, T-Mobile will be there, Verizon's still going to be there, and then within two years, when that lease is up, Verizon then joins, the tower comes down.
Correct.
And I thank you for listening and making that happen. It's a very great safety thing for our kids, and I appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
A question on that. I mean, is this, is your tower, how far away is your tower from the one in the park?
It's 1,100 and I can switch.
Is that within our 1,500?
It is.
So, nasty.
So it is within the 1,500-foot range. We met your code in showing that we, it's not technologically able to hold, but going above and beyond the code, we've worked to obtain the second carrier. They obviously will finalize that after it's approved, but the reason that it has to be so close is because since this is a concurrency project, it's very similar to how you have new State Road 52 and old County Road 52. They have to be in the same area to serve the same people, even though they aren't in the exact same spot. But if you left County Road 52, a State Road 52, and kept building, you would have a bit of a traffic, if I may be so bold, nightmare, or a uncomfortable traffic situation. So you went and realigned State Road 52 to a four-lane road, and this is our.
Yeah, I just don't know if our, I worked on that cell tower on this when we drafted the first one, and I just don't know if you guys know, we have a requirement that they have to co-locate, or they can't be so close together. Because we were getting them popping up on the same property, different towers, when towers were first opened out, so, but they've worked it out that the other one won't become there.
Okay.
Thank you.
The first speaker was?
I have two signed up. First speaker, David Talby. Second, following Mr. Talby, Jim Hammond.
Mr. Chair, if I may, David Talby is my witness. He is available for any questions about property values, since that came up at Planning Commission, but he doesn't have a direct presentation.
Okay.
Jim Hammond.
Good afternoon. Jim Hammond, 23742 Plantation Palms Boulevard, Lando Lakes, 34639. I'm here today representing Plantation Palms.
Mr. Hammond, just one, I'm sorry, one thing. Just for the record, can you state whether or not you've been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Oh, thank you. I'm here today as president of Plantation Palms HOA, which I've been for the last eight years, and we're delighted that the Planning Commission put a condition on that the community got a chance to vote on what design cell tower would be put in place. And so instead of having an official HOA vote, which had a bunch of red tape, we did an extensive poll, and so we allowed people to use email, our official e-voting system. You could use Facebook polling. The idea was to get out to everybody possible and give them a chance to have a say-so. Of 821 households, we were fortunate to get 283 votes, and I'll tell you, on average, that's better than what we get for annual elections every year. So we had a good participation. It was pretty clear what the community wanted. Of the 283 votes, we had 240 of 85% go for the pine tree design, so I thought that was pretty conclusive. And I'll also state that the significant issue here wasn't the cell tower. As such, it was our support for our golf course. So our golf course closed in 2014. Were able to work with the current owner, bring it back in 2016. Will never forget those days. And so, A, the community can do to help support the golf course, we're all in. Thank you very much.
Jim, I just want to thank you for your service in the community, from helping work with that golf course that was defunct and having some troubles to bring it back to the way it is, and now it's number-one-rated golf course.
Yes.
Nice. Wow.
Very good. Congratulations. Doing a great job out there, and yeah, we're, like I said, happy to have the attorney work so well to make this happen, happy to help your communities thrive even further. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Chair.
Any ones here from the public to speak to this item?
I have no one else signed up and no one on WebEx.
Okay. To the board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass the unanimous.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll take care of all our public hearing items. We'll go to miscellaneous business. Vice Chairman Oakley.
I'm surprised. Two, two, I think.
We got through quicker.
Yeah, what's wrong? What happened? We got through before 2:30 says.
Is that earlier start time?
Yep. Pull out my little agenda sheet. On June 23rd, I attended the Tampa Bay Transportation Management Area Leadership Group and the Sun Coast Transportation Planning Alliance Board Meeting at the FDOT District 7 office there in Tampa. I did express my feelings about it. I didn't quite like the membership, and we were outweighed as far as members from the Hillsborough County area over Pasco. I was told by Secretary Quinn, he explained it to me very well, that the regional metropolitan group would have to be membership based on population, and so that kind of assured that we had to have that many people. I wish it was a lot less and all that, but then I just heard within the last day or two, and maybe y'all can add a little something to this, but I heard if we choose to go into the regional MPO, that we would actually lose our Pasco County MPO. And is that, is that a fact? I've heard that to be true. If that's the case, I would not want to join this group. And I spoke to Carl earlier, I don't know if he's here right now.
No, he's left.
And he's the one that told me that. So I guess somebody needs to, Mr. Cabal, if y'all could research that and be sure that's right, because if that is the case, I do not want to give up or speaking out for.
That's not, that's not. The money that comes to Pasco federally has to be spent.
I understand, but you won't have an MPO like you do today.
There's different ways that.
That's just what I've been told.
Yeah. Well, we'll have someone speak up, but if you heard Secretary Quinn, when he spoke at the TMAT.
Well, I know that we still get our money for our areas, but if it has to go through the regional, and we don't have a, and we don't have a local, there's a problem.
No, that's not, I'm positive.
Well, somebody needs to tell me, tell me what the real facts are.
And it was Carl who suggested that we do the regional.
Yep.
So he would.
Now, I understand the fact with the regional, we will speak as a group of, I think we would become 17th in the nation as far as population and what we speak up, for federal money. I understand that, but I wouldn't want to give up our local MPO.
Did you do the survey?
Where we discuss and we vote on our projects. That's what I would not want to give up.
The best way to handle this is to have someone speak, come speak to us. Yeah.
I'll take care of that. Let me go report a gender item.
I'd have to guess, but my guess is, what's probably being said is, there can only be one MPO under the state designation. That would be the regional MPO, but you could still have.
The function.
The function locally.
And the local control of your local planning.
I think that needs to be, because there's only one state-authorized MPO in a region. And so if the tri-county is the one the state is recognizing, they wouldn't recognize us locally.
But we're speaking as a bigger voice, and we have the regional, and I understand that, and I would think that'd be good for us, but not if we have to give up our speaking or voting on our own issues within our own county. I wouldn't want to do that, so. I'm just making that statement, but we'll have to figure that out, so.
Okay. We'll bring that up as a board item. We stick our vote.
As a county, we speak to our issues nationally. We would only be like somewhere between 41 or 45.
Yeah, that was amazing.
And that, but joining with the three counties, we join together, we would speak as number 17 in the nation, which is very important, because there's a lot of big projects in our area, and we're very much in a growing part of this community, this region. So I just need to find out that, so. And I feel comfortable. Good question. Thank you. One thing else I have is, just want to report, I've never been on a vacation more than a week in my entire life, even with my own company. I didn't even take two weeks. And there are always short trips, but after three weeks, I was definitely ready to come home. But I'll tell you this, and going through the New England states, going through, went through Connecticut, Salem, Cape Cod, Boston, went to Niagara Falls, Maine, Portland, those areas, all those areas, there was no 40-foot lots whatsoever that I saw. If they were, there were businesses downtown. But you didn't see any of that in-house, and there was a lot of room on houses, bigger lots. One thing I very much so noticed, the citizens in those states that I toured in thought a lot about their area because there was no trash. There was no trash on the side of the road, no trash buildup anywhere I could see, anywhere. When I was in Niagara Falls around Canada, there was presence of law enforcement. You know, they'd be actually, not necessarily in vehicles, but they'd be walking in the parks and all that. And let me tell you, there's thousands of people visiting there right now. I mean, it's just amazing, the number of people that are there in Niagara Falls. But where we travel in the different areas, there was not a lot of presence, other than maybe you'll see a car stop or police something, but the presence of police in the area, you did not see much as far as that goes. And there was not, I couldn't tell, there was a lot of, I mean, a lot of people, but there was not a lot of issues in that manner. So it's just things you notice, because when you're around here, you walk out on the street right now, in a few minutes, a police officer or something drive by. I didn't see any of that up there, so it was pretty amazing, and I didn't see any problems or hear about any problems while we were up there. But beautiful trip. I did let Chuck Carden know about Tampa Water. I found a water resource when I was at Niagara, and I think all we got to figure out is the piping from Niagara Falls down to Tampa, and then we'll have everything solved, so. Okay. But that's my report. Thanks.
Commissioner Whittaker.
Good, thank you, Chair. Kickoff here, we had enjoyed, we all did, the change-of-command ceremony for Chief Perez, and excited about his energy, great energy, and don't worry, you weren't left out of the conversation, Commissioner Oakley. We threw a line out there for you, so, pretty special to be a part of.
Hook and line?
And sinker.
Okay.
And great program, excited for the new chief, see what he can do, and congratulations again to Chief Casson on his, what, 11 years of service with Pasco County? And, you know, new team foreman, JJ, I don't know if he's still in, but wishing everybody in the team the best. One thing I did learn, though, don't follow Commissioner Bradford at an event like this. Just let him speak and then.
Oh, God, yes.
We just tip your hat, so wishing Commissioner Bradford the, all the best. Next, my favorite subject matter, live local project. We have six live local projects now in Pasco. This one is in District 5, Commissioner Mariano's district, on Shady Hills Road, a proposed 84 units, and once again, it's on a C2-zone parcel, which is frustrating. You know, we're trying to figure out a way to help folks up there and improve their roads, and these projects get tax breaks for a long time, and, you know, they need to be paying their share if they're going to come in, especially on a job-creating site. And so as these come in, I'm just going to continue to make record to this board, and everybody knows where they are and what they're doing, so I appreciate that. That project is going to be just north of Lancer Road on Shady Hills, just a hair south of County Line Road. And lastly, again, thank you to Andy Taylor. Your service will be missed, and appreciate, once again, I think, the gesture today, appreciate your work here. You're always welcome back, and we'll see you around, see you around soon. And then Andy's replacement, some of you may have met him, Brian Holmes. Raise your hand, Brian. Brian's no stranger to the public sector. He was in the Navy for over a handful of years, and he was, what was it, Interim Public Works Director? Is that was the title?
Work.
Yeah, for the city of Date City, so great operating experience, and then he left the city and was in the private sector, working on re-zonings in a number of different projects around the country. So excited to have Brian join the team, and he and Andy will be working together over the next couple of weeks while we still have him, and excited to see what we can do, and appreciate, Terry will take you under her wing, under her wing too, so thanks for joining us, and that'll be, that's it for me.
I got to have.
Mr. Starky.
But remember, I didn't get to do anything last.
Was there a reason?
You went to Niagara Falls.
Oh, there you go.
I will say, I enjoyed the change-of-command as well, but that was a little long, not in line. But I'm looking forward to our new fire chief and wish Chief Casson well. Okay, so these are ones I just dropped in while we were talking. I wondered if you liked the look of this neighborhood. This is, this is Tampa, City of Tampa. Okay, another one. And see the parking on the street? This is Hyde Park, very, very expensive homes, super-expensive homes. And you've got Old Northeast, super-expensive homes again. These are rear, they're either rear-loaded, hang on a second, you go on the glass. They're either rear-loaded, or the garage is in the back and the driveway is on the side, but not in the front of the house, right? And all those guys that spoke to us live in neighborhoods where it's, they have alleys and.
Ms. Starky?
Huh?
With 40 and 50-foot lots, you don't have room for a driveway on the side.
I agree. Well, but you can do it in the back if you don't make it crazy expensive. And notice how old that oak tree is.
Yep.
Okay.
200 years old.
Keep going. This is Key West. With old oak trees. Keep going. Okay, so these are way out of order, but, so I went to the NACO conference in Austin, and I always try and do the bike ride, and these were, this was an electric bike, bike ride, and Austin has an amazing trail system that goes for miles, and this is what's called a gravel trail. And their trails went from hard pack, you know, concrete trail, paved trail, to gravel on the same trail. It's very interesting, but this is what we meant, one of the things we meant to look at when we went to Bentonville, but we were so busy, we never made it to the gravel trails. But I'm hoping that we can. But I'm hoping that we can get these in the, in the different parks that we have, like old Jeep roads that are already there and have a system of these well-manicured gravel trails. So these are NACO representatives writing. Did the ones, I sent a whole group and I might, it might have been too big.
Commissioner Starkey.
No.
As you talk about trails, today when we had the gentleman that spoke after we showed the walkway into the beach, the path that they put in place for the handicap people, the carpet.
Oh, yes.
He mentioned something that I was going to, actually the lady mentioned it as well, about doing like trails for people. And I'm thinking if we shouldn't be looking at some near point down the future as far as like, in all the environmental lands that we have, to allow motorized gravel trails type thing, some type of improvement in the trail system.
Oh, yeah.
Up in New Hampshire, when I had said I was up there a while ago, it was, it's a big part of the tourism right now. So where the snowmobiles go, the bikes can go, the all-terrain vehicles can go too. So I think it's something we should be taking a look at as a group to find out, we can put them all over the county and for.
What's known as gravel trails, which is an unpaid trail, which ecologically has no impact, is one of the fastest-growing trail sectors out there. And with all our water management district, you know, all our wellfields, there's no reason why we can't have trails that people with all different abilities can access. I have, I do not remember what that is. So, sorry, I don't remember that one. Yeah. Oh, okay, so this is a before and after. So you see on the upper left, no landscaping. And now they have put their landscaping in, in their trees. So it's slowly happening.
Great place to do an operation too.
Yeah. We did the ribbon cutting yesterday on Advent Center Ice, no, I'm sorry, Advent Health Care Pavilion. There's Representative Steele in the back left there. It was very, very hot. Okay, skip. God, these are way out of order. So at NACO, the left here, my committee went to the University of Texas in Austin and it was a very interesting presentation on how they do these graphics for scientists around the world. And then here's Florida voting, you know, for our, for our next president. Okay? What I really wanted to show you is, and I guess maybe didn't go through, what, one of the breakouts that I did with my committee, CEWD, we spent a whole day at what was an old shopping center, and I think it might have been too big to send to you, I'll send a few, at a shopping center that they bought and they turned the Sears building into workforce training center. And then they did a, I have the notes in here, but like seventy-eight million dollar bond, did some more, and then they did like a seven-hundred-million-dollar bond and they took this shopping center, an old shopping center, humongous workforce training center, they sold the parking lots to private developers who went vertical on apartments and townhomes. And it's in a traditionally black, depressed community and it's just transformed that whole neighborhood. So I'll have those, I'll just email those pictures to you all. But what, what an interesting P3 development they did with their old mall. Fantastic. Okay, I want to pass these out to you. This is something that NACO is doing. It's called Operation Green Light for Veterans. And I'd like our county to participate. I don't know if this has to be something that we vote on, but you use the, there's a county toolkit template to pass a resolution declaring your county's participation in Operation Green Light for Veterans. And they, they're doing all kinds of things on Veterans Day. So if you guys would agree, I think we should participate, try to get as many counties as they can to support this Operation Green Light.
We can take that and I can have veteran services vet all that for us.
Okay. And is that it on the pictures?
Yes.
Okay. I'll send you guys privately the pictures from that mall that was converted into a workforce training center. We had our first boot camp graduate at AMSKILLS. Thank you very much, staff, for all your work to get us our TCO grad. Thank you so much. And Esther and everybody, we got it on the Friday and the class started on Saturday. I mean, it was by the skin of our teeth that we got, we got it. We had the Department of Corrections there to take a tour. We had HUD from Jacksonville. And, you know, we got a CDPG grant, so they are in charge of that money and they were thrilled with what's going on and loved it. We had commissioners from Hernando and Pinellas County and staff from Senator DeSigle's office, Senator, Representative Maggert's and Senator Angolia's office and many, General Deal from, who used to be the commander of MacDill. And he's the one who put together the coalition that's down there with, I think it's 24 generals from around the world. And he was so enamored with what we're doing, he wants to bring them all up to see it. And one of the things they do at MacDill, which you may or may not be aware, so that's the home of the KC-135s, which my son-in-law flies. Most of those planes are from the 50s. You cannot buy parts for those planes anymore. So they make, they actually make them at MacDill and ship them all around the world. They have a 3D printer and a fabrication office there and they want to bring those people up to see AMSKILLS as well, from MacDill Air Force Base. While we were doing our graduation class, we had professors in from around the country getting certified on how to teach robotics courses. So we were teaching the, we were training the trainers as we were also running a boot camp. So, and, and PEDC, Smart Starts, was in there filming two of their really big success stories, which I think you'll see at the big awards dinner. So there's a lot of activity going on. So invite you all to come and see what's going on there and be sure and put October 4th on your calendar for our first inaugural gala there, which is the Tampa Bay Area's Manufacturing Dinner. If you, I go to it all the time, it's usually in Oldsmar, but now they agreed to move it to AMSKILLS. So we'll have a big event there on October 4th. Okay, that's it for me.
Okay. And just to tag into what you were just saying about AMSKILLS in a mall, I know Gulfia Mall has got some improvements going on, they may have some space, but there's also a Publix Mall up on US 19, an old Publix building that's sitting vacant, probably next, two buildings next to it that they could be both contenders for a P3 project as well.
Yeah.
So something to keep in mind. Okay. And county administrator.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick items. First, I'd like to welcome Sonia Toulouse here. She is our new agenda coordinator. I recognize her from doing the stuff for planning and development, so we're happy to have her and she's hit the ground running, so thank you. The other thing is, is just to call to your attention, our Engineering Services Department did energize a new traffic signal up at County Line Road and Winding Oaks. So right along there, our border with, with Hernando County, it was a joint effort, we worked together with Hernando County, but it's always good to have these safety improvements coming, coming forward and doing good things for our citizens. That's all for now.
Can I jump back in? Because Rob Marin was there as well. What'd you think, Rob?
It was great shows.
Yeah, it was great. We also, you know, had, I think, 12 high school students participate in a, a one-week utilities boot camp and then they all worked for Pasco County for six weeks, paid internships and they hired a couple. So we had, we had that as well. Thanks, Rob.
Okay. County attorney.
I wanted to add my thanks to Ms. Blair for her work on the airport zoning matter, something I didn't really have to deal with, so that's always good. That's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Madam Clark.
All right. I have a couple of items. First up, I wanted to point out, the Clerks Association statewide does an Operation Green Light, which is different. So when I heard it, I thought it was the same thing, but, yeah, this is our, Operation Green Light for the Clerks is a driver's license reinstatement program, you know, green light, I can go drive. All right. So a couple of things that I have, I just wanted to point out that our IG filed a, an audit, final report as N, noted items, N124. The purpose of that audit was to verify the accuracy and completeness of permits eligible for a private provider fee refund and verified refunds were issued in compliance with established policies and procedures. I just want to let you know that all opportunities for improvement have already been addressed by BCS or they have implemented corrected action plans. And we, I just wanted to express the appreciation that we have for that opportunity. My next topics are that for 39 consecutive years, our county has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association for the ACFOR that we submit every year. And that was for the year that ended 2021. And my office received the award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial report for eight years. I figure once we do 40 consecutive years, maybe I can bring a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners to acknowledge the excellence in financial reporting that we do. And then what has been handed out is the annual financial, comprehensive financial report, this big, big, about 400-plus-page document. This is for the year that ended in 2022. It was emailed to you, I had emailed it back on July 7th. We submitted it on June 30th as well to GFOA and also submitted for the, for the award of Excellence in Achievement of Financial Reporting. I want to make sure that you're aware that. We are in the process of creating the popular annual financial report for this document and once it's finalized, I'll bring that for you. And it basically is the consumer version of the, of the, of the ACFOR that you have before you. And we will also submit for an award for that as well. Let's see, I think that is all that I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here from the sheriff's office? Let's see, Chase or Alex? Okay. All right, I'll go to my reports. I had attended the Florida Chamber Environmental Permitting Course, which was phenomenal. I used to start, I started with that when I first got elected, learned all about stormwater, TMBLs, that really helped me with my career. When we were pushing for Ridge Road a few years ago, because I'd meet at the same time, I had became more active, active with NACO, became on the Transportation Committee, and then with President Trump getting elected, Governor Scott sending a letter, Congressman Bilirakas sending a letter, Commissioner Starkey, Iain Wells going to DC to work with the Army Corps to get Ridge Road done. That was my big focus and I never kind of looked around from there. But I was going to go to NACO this year, I had a little family situation with, made me adjust my calendar and have to, just something I wanted to do for the family. So I skipped NACO and went down to the permitting class. And I want to tell you, the money that's out there, the state is, has, the feds have, is unbelievable. And I know Mike's working on getting ourselves a residency officer. I'm going to tell you, Hillsborough is so far ahead of us right now getting money with the project they got, it's crazy. But the great thing is, a lot of those contractors and engineers work for us too, they want to help us. Getting a C grant agent, these got to be the two top things we add into a budget if they're not fully funded yet, but they have, they have to get in. We just have so much opportunity that's out there and with all the great things we've got coming up, I see a lot of leveraging coming up, but we do need to take these steps. And Mike, I want to thank you for saying you're going to go do it and I'm just going to say, there's just so much that's out there, that's out there, that we can benefit from. Just want to show you, this is a picture of Hudson Beach. I think three months ago in May, I showed a picture where we just put brand-new sand out there. We took it from down in the channel and put it up and over and it looked beautiful. Just a few storms, it's all washed away right back. There's the sand that was on our beach that's down the channel right now. So it's a continuing problem. We definitely need to fix it. We had a great plan in front of the state two years ago for 1.8 million. When Hurricane Ian came in, they pulled it back because they thought they needed the money. This past year, we didn't even get funded, to be, to be honest. So I don't want to wait for the state again until we can proceed. This type of project could be one that we could get funded elsewhere, but we got to put the engineering in place. I talked to Keith Wiley, I've talked to Adam Thomas, I'll talk to CDPG, whoever it may be, but I want to have, Mike, if you would, talk with Keith. Let's go talk about doing this because the people in Hudson are coming from everywhere, that's a different picture I'm going to get to, which can help us. But with Hudson Beach, with so many people that down there every, every night to see the sunset, their friends come down, out of town, and they come down, they see that beach, it just doesn't look good. So if we could, I'd like to get the sand back on the beach right away, but more in pull, I want to think longer term. Now, the next picture I want to show you is like right next to the same channel, just down a little bit further.
Nasty.
Nasty, that's oil, that's diesel, there's been other things found there we don't want to talk about in that channel. Now currently, DEP, we had a grant from them, we're spending, they're spending, I think, 165 grand studying all the bacteria. I was talking with Colleen as I was in a residence house last night about what's going on out there. And GP is aware of this, but they're not doing anything with the study that they've got. So I think it may be something where they, they mentioned, Colleen mentioned the Coast Guard may be the one responsible. I don't know who it is, but we need to go take a look at this. The residents also said they had a big issue up in Hernando County with diesel fumes leaking from old shrimp boats. And the rumor was, don't know if it's factual, that they've come down here now. I talked to Mike Malakos from, who owns a marina right on the canal. He says, Jack, there's nothing I do to put any diesel out there. When the tanker comes in, it comes in the container, it's controlled, it goes through. When I put it out, I watch it as well, we're not doing any leaking out there. So it's something.
You have to put dye in there.
Well, it's, we just, we need more awareness. And I think I'm going to start working with the feds, so I just want to make you aware of this. One of the benefits could be with flushing would be better, but there's a core problem that's there, we got to, we got to find out what's causing it. And it's going to, it may take more attention from the feds to help us out, to fund it, to go look at it and get it done, but there's definitely an issue that's out there. And all that could get dramatically improved by opening up the sandbar, getting the sand and putting a jetty there, but there's just something we need to do to get that done. And I would also like to say, you know, we're working hard on the panhandling, but we still have the issue, we need that focus continually, I don't give, weekends, Sundays. I see a lot of sniper signs everywhere that continually are there and never getting picked up. If our code people are going by, they should be picking that stuff up, in my opinion.
There was a time, Christian, when we had volunteer sign guys who, you know, they were retired, they were all gentlemen, not that they had any females, that were authorized by the county to go pick up the sniper signs. And do some education on signs. And do you remember when we had that? Yeah, and someone got rid of them. But I'd love to bring that volunteer back.
It was an enforcement problem. It was an enforcement problem for my office.
For what? What do you mean?
Because you had, we had a couple of issues that folks that were on, on that brigade went above and beyond what the board had authorized them to do and.
Well, it's just a matter of education.
Even resulting in fisticuffs. And it was decided that it was better to have our paid employees do that work.
Well, I would consider bringing them back and if we go to fisticuff some stuff, but maybe that's a leadership education issue.
Well.
Or get rid of the bad apples on the brigade.
It's, it could be an issue if you can bring a brigade back, we can look at it, but I think our code people should be doing it period anyway, even while they see.
It's pretty obvious who the violators are. Their members, right there.
And if you have the code people doing it, they can make note where it was picked up, they can make a phone call to the people that they're not allowed and hopefully discourage the behavior of that again, especially if they know it's going to get picked up.
Well, can we, can we fine them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a violation.
That's our money maker right there.
So let's take a look at code then. And if I could, I just want to put a shout out, you know, Mike, you've done a great job putting people in great positions, but I will say, I'm feeling it, I'm sure you guys are too, but Rob Marin, what you're doing with the team has been phenomenal. Literally, we get all sorts of complex problems and sometimes it's like, Jack, there's nothing we can do and we can fix it, whatever it may be. You're clear, you're concise, you get your team. And I'll tell you, just seeing, and just seeing them respond, like you said, we've got great people working for us. And when they're positioned and empowered to find solutions, they're doing it. They're helping people make closings and doing all that great stuff. So I just want to give you a shout out because what you're doing is a tough, tough job. I hope you stay on for five years. But no, no, you're going to retire, but I want to just say, just keep doing what you're doing, it's phenomenal and I think you're elevating the whole team up and you're making Pasco better, so keep up the great work. And that's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks.